House meeting for Monday on the 20th, 25th at 7:01 PM. Do you guys have a chance to look at previous meetings that we've sent to you guys? Any corrections or additions to those? If not, I'll take a motion to approve them.
So you all in favor?
Aye.
Anything to add for tonight's agenda? Now I'll take a motion to approve that also.
So.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I handed you guys out, I think we'll just vote with Alfred, so he doesn't have to sit through everything. A copy of everything that he sent me and then also dumpsters in town that people have like, we discussed it a little bit last meeting about changing over to the well, I guess all of a sudden. What do you got here for us?
Well, the other thing I brought really was some pictures of the carts and dumpsters, which if you've been around Streeter or Jamestown or anywhere, you've seen it already. And then in the contract, well, so what I had was 11, 2-yard and 9, 4-yard, I think is what you had given me. Something like that anyway. So I put all the different sizes in there just so you would know in case somebody needed a different size other than a 2 or a 4. But what we're assuming is that there's 20 dumpsters, mostly 2 and 4 yards. But it doesn't have to be. And then the cart would be a 96 gallon.
Is this a 96?
Well, they look the same, but yeah, they'll all be 96.
They should be having wheels and stuff.
Yeah, yes.
The commercial part.
Yeah, and whether it's a 64 or 90, well, in fact, we could provide some 64 gallon for people that don't want to have a big container if you have particularly elderly, single women who rather not, we've got 64 gallons. They look exactly the same. You have wheels on them. So that would be an option, I suppose.
Those lids just flip up? They don't come all the way off right?
Correct, yep.
How do you treat the, oh, like the tasty freeze?
That would be a, any, any business would be a commercial. And it would just depend on what size dumpster or cart. If they want a cart, that's fine.
But if they're only open six months out of the year?
Well, then they would only pay for the, for the time they're open.
Okay, it wouldn't be your.
I mean, we probably wouldn't pick up the, well, we need to talk about that a little bit because you're going to want to have some spares here. So you can either pick it up and wait until they reopen or just leave it there, but we wouldn't charge it. We would need to know when they close. And then we would just know that we could be part of the bill.
More like the Legion, you know that? There's only garbage when there's an event. So sometimes there's a couple of months where there is nothing.
Do you know that ahead of time? Probably, well, yeah, I guess I don't know. We've never really had to deal with something like a on and off again facility. But I suppose we could, we could, we would know. We'd have to keep track. Is that the only location that would, that would be treated that way? The driver would have to keep track of any months where we didn't pick that container.
We're going to be seasonal out there too. At Miller Honey out there.
Oh, sure.
You know, so. Would we contact you or who would we, how would we go about?
Well, that would need to be done through the city because we're, because all we're going to do is invoice the city once a month for everything, commercial and residential and everything. So somehow we would have to keep track of, of you letting us know before we send in. So what happens is we'll, we'll do this. Let's say we start September 1st, we need to talk about that too. Whatever the start date is, we would invoice at the end of that month. So we would know if we, if we know there's places where we need to keep track of whether we pick it up or not, then we would know at the end of the month that we're not going to build that location. But it might be easier if you kept track of that as a city and let me know sometime before the end of the month that there was no garbage picked up. Not, not exactly sure how we would do that. We've, we've, we've done like six months at a time. We've never done something like that. We wouldn't like to talk about it. But we can do it. We just need to figure out a good way to make sure we keep track of it.
No, it's only three months there, but we're not going to be doing it.
The Legion hasn't used a dumpster for quite a while. They just usually put it up and you can see it when it's there. We haven't brought them a dumpster for a long time.
So they would just put, is it a dumpster or a cart?
Uh, towed. Usually it's just bags. They just send bags.
So it fit in a cart? So then what they would need to do is just put the cart out when it needs to be picked up. No different really than a resident, except that a resident, we're going to charge them our time. Because we, we won't pick up 200 and whatever it is, 30 carts every time because people aren't going to put them out every time.
Well, that's, that's the question we got too is in our particular, at Miller Honey, with all of our employees live in California. They come out here for four months out of the year.
Where do they live?
In Cali, in your town, four different places. So we're going to get, and they'll have carts, you know, the residents.
So same thing, if you, so do you shut the water off at those places? So then you'll know, you'll have, you'll have a count of how many people are using. So if a house shuts down for however many months, we just wouldn't build that house.
Okay.
I mean, we do that in Streeter. I think this last month we added.
Right.
A house, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We just have to have a good way since that tender shut off. And that's something that you're going to know that you won't.
Oh, yeah. It's the same exact month, same time every year. I mean.
But it applies to any house that you have that's over or closed.
Okay.
And, and we have no way to know that.
No, no.
Just because a car is out, doesn't mean that.
I mean, if it's going to be like a flat rate, you're going to get billed regardless of, you know, that's what I'm wanting.
Well, it is per house, but only if that house is occupied during that month. But you're going to have to keep track of that. I mean, don't you keep track of that anyway?
Well.
We do.
They get charged everything year round.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter if you're here or not because it's unfair to the other residents to have to pick up all the slack for 65 seasonal houses we have. So they get charged year round.
And coverage might be a little different moving forward, obviously.
And that would be fine too. I just need to know.
Right.
What to tell, oh, everyone on my end. That's all I'm saying. I mean, it's, I mean, it's 20 bucks a month, I'm done. So even though you charge them, you still shut the water off?
They have a choice. They can shut it off. And they don't have to pay for it to go off and they get a free on. But more than that, because they're only here a couple of weeks out of the year.
Yeah.
So, but we still, they, they get a flat 77, 750 every month, all year long.
Well, that's probably a decision you need to make.
Okay.
That's, that's fine.
We got to let you know accordingly, it was shut off. We don't want to pick up our system now.
Yeah, really what we need to know is the number, not necessarily. I mean, we, we have a way to put in our computer the specific address. So just so you know, all of these carts have RFID tags in. So all the addresses are listed in our computer system, which is in the truck. And when it picks one up, it knows. But it won't know, because there are going to be residents that don't put their cart out every time. It's not a, it's, it's a way to tell us participation rate, but not necessarily when a specific house hasn't been picked up for a month or two or whatever. So we've never, we've never been able to do billing based on the way the computer system reads it. It's really more for tracking. I want to know that the driver went down every street and, and if we missed something, we have video. So all, all the trucks have six cameras on them. So we'll know if there was a car blocking in or for whatever reason we didn't pick it up or if we just missed. Then we'll know. We'll be able to look at the computer and know that.
Like oil is prohibitive. What about like the co-op? I think you throw the oil filter to the dumpster, right?
And the, and the anti-oil models and stuff.
Can you put the lids back on them?
Yeah, that's fine.
But there's no lid on them.
On the filter, yeah. We, yeah.
It happens.
Right.
It's garbage.
Muck carcasses.
Yeah, we take those too. We get it in the recycling sometimes too. We dug out about 150 geese two years ago in our recycling that was dug up from here. Got a pile of them too. And then those are okay in the garbage, just we don't like it in the recycling. The, the bins up front of the residents have like, they got to put down so much money for each other to continue still.
It's all included in like broken ones or something that happens there?
Well, yeah, well, it depends on how we think they got broken, but we'll. You can replace the lids. That's probably the most common thing that breaks. Wheels will come off because they're, they're hammered on with little hubcaps. And those are easy to fix. If they break, we replace them. Yeah, it's not. These all have 12-year warranty, so it's. I think we really have. Very solid because we, we need it, but.
If you hit it with a snowball.
And then.
That's happened too.
I know he drives a snowball, so I'm not thinking.
I've got to help him with these.
I just wanted to make sure I read this right too for the residents that are possibly needing more than a 96 gallon.
Yeah. We tend to have a second one for $10.
$10, that's all we're going to add additional.
Thanks. What we assume is that we're already there.
Yeah.
So it's basically the weight of the garbage that we're currently recording.
Absolutely. And then also, I know, I don't know if you did this last year. I know we changed it a few times, but like alley pickup, it's, there's none of that we're changing. We, we have some people that wanted to keep it that way, but I think we changed that.
All streetside.
All streetside.
It needs to be streetside. Are there, do you have any dumpsters in an alley?
Yep.
The care center.
Care center would be.
Wouldn't.
You could, you could come out off the main street. Or you turn back up to it and walk back to right on the main street.
Well, we don't, so all of these, these are front load. So the truck will come into the dumpster with the driver looking at it, pick it up, dump it, set it back down and then back.
Yeah, there'd be no problem. He'll just come in from the north, drive right up to it, drive up to the other one.
Back up. Yeah, we have dumpsters in alleys.
The only spot I find is the van. Probably the school. We have a good time trying to turn back up to it. It's narrow, it's narrow the street.
Well, these trucks are really long.
Yeah.
Probably, well, I'm sure they're longer. You have a real load of trucks. Yeah, these trucks are longer than you know.
You might want to look at that.
The school has changed when they add them.
So tell me where that is on the, well, I've been here.
It's on the east side of the school. Right down Elm Street and you'll see. Bird Avenue.
Yeah, well, we will figure out a way to make sure we can get all the dumpsters.
I mean, I think there's room for you to do it. It might have to just be a three pointer or something to add it, but there's, there's room there. I, I don't think you're going to be able to just come in and turn right into maybe if they need them.
Yeah, that's true.
If they need to, they could just move to just straight into that.
Exactly.
You know, right, because they go dead ends.
Where we put a lot of dead ends when they're cleaned and thrown out of there.
Yeah.
Do you have any pickups that are out of town outside the city limits?
Miller Honey, I mean, is that considered a city limit?
So is, um, is this city limit? The, um, the county shop, Bogey County shop.
Yeah, I know where the honey place is, so I'm not worried about that.
So the Bogey County shops are across the street coming up over here. They have one.
Yeah, that's fine. As long as we're not going 3 or 4 miles.
No.
You got to go country, close another one.
How far away is that?
Two miles.
South.
Yeah.
And now.
That's, that would actually really pick that up.
When you guys call us.
Yeah, it's what size the dumpster is out. That's the area. And so we put a 2-yard there and be fine. Then, yeah, then what I would say is notice no of these.
Oh, okay.
We'll have to add them on the list.
It's on.
Is there any questions, Rich?
Well, so what do you, what's, what is your, what do you think as far as timing? And yet, and one of the considerations for us is we have to get these carts. And I'm told that the lead time is three or four weeks, but I'll leave you know, I'll find that out when we actually place the order.
Yeah, I see that.
So I don't know what you're, what you were thinking as far as the way you want this to, but I think we will. Pull the trigger.
Did, the only concern I have on that is did anyone reach out to a lot of these businesses? Or like residential, maybe some of these guys would want to be okay with just their 96 gallon or 2-0. These, some of these businesses are going to get it pretty hard and it's, I don't want to say it's our fault, but we have to charge what we should be charging for a lot of years.
Well, that's just good. And they're going to get.
And I, I've discussed a few businesses, but I, I mean, it was what it is. They're, they're okay with that. I haven't seen any negative.
Okay.
Or any concerns.
You know, I just, I'm.
And you told them the dollar amount?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, it's good.
It's considerably more than, for the commercial rates, more than what we.
You know, the schools, the big ones today, that one's 3, 3-yarders.
Maybe if I were to, the, the third one's never usually a, a lister.
So 2, 3-yards close to 4-yards.
I think I would do 2, 4-yards.
Yeah.
That's what it'd be.
You know, there'd be.
I don't, what did we charge for?
Uh, we were at 29.
So $30 a piece.
32.
That would be a 3124.
For a 3-yard dumpster?
Yeah, we were way.
We had, just for regular trash.
That was going to shock somebody.
For a regular trash, we were only $14. And that's as many cans as you want to put out there.
Oh, I mean. Everything you demand out there.
I.
But that was kind of my concern is like I said, we have to charge what we should be. There's going to be some, you know, you go up from $60.
Should we draw a flyer and maybe mail it to everybody?
I think we should do something before we. Sign and get going, but I mean, that's up to you guys obviously, but I just think there's some people that might drop off here.
It's a commercial business. I mean, I don't see that, but, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but we've been way, I mean, they've held this ship for a while. I mean, many, many, many years of getting their garbage pretty much for free. That's, and if they, they're shocked, I'm, I'm sorry, but this is not any more than anywhere else is getting charged for. I think we need to get the ball going. That's my opinion.
Maybe send those letters just to the commercial ones. Just to give them, they have the other ones that are going to get.
Here's the, here's the question to ask, is what if they say no? Are we going to shut this whole thing down for one business? How many commercial businesses we got here?
12, 13, 14 on here.
And 200 residents?
Three.
I mean.
And what's your thought on that? Yeah. I guess, yeah, for the most part I agree with Jeff. Like if we're going to do it. Get the ball rolling.
Yeah.
Pull off the bend.
Yeah, I think so.
Most of people know, I talk to people, most of people know this is any course. And the care center knows, the building knows.
I see most of marketing too that it's going to be 2-yards.
Right, most, I mean, there isn't, there'd be.
There's a few of them.
I understand your concern.
It's only what you thought.
Well, CBL requirements, you know, the cost of the proof, I mean. The truck, you know, is of age too. So we're going to force to do something at the time. Maybe we should go ahead with that. Does the city, we don't have any dumpsters now as a city, do we?
No. Do we guys? No.
We have the city, but we're new.
Yeah. Like I know.
Not that we own that we use or something.
Right.
Because we own all of them.
That's correct.
But we, we is the city going to be able to run them?
But you know, we've been spoiling, we take a lot of the garbage down to the truck and just throw it in the back and ran it a week.
Right.
That would be.
Right, right.
And what I was concerned about was.
Oh, well, here, city hall, we throw our garbage out, but we don't get garbage.
Well, we all agree on that. For, for here, you get one free.
Yeah.
That'll be fine. But like if you have, if you have a resident that's cleaning out a house or, you know, moving or where they got quite a bit of garbage.
Good question.
You know, maybe it wouldn't hurt to have a dumpster available. But at the same time, I'm a little concerned because during dump hunting, when the waters had some issues with hunters throwing carcasses in.
They're going to dump it across.
Yeah, even though if we pull it out of town.
I mean, oh, yeah, I mean, all of the dumpsters, they call them full.
Technically, it's not an issue.
Technically, in Jamestown, people take carcasses. It's just our city doesn't allow it.
We can dump them at the, at the bays or at where we dump garbage. They don't care. We put deer and all that. I mean, not just carcasses, they do.
Yeah, that was just a city ordinance.
Right.
I think that's because it got out of hand. They over here by the hall, it's kind of like, shut them.
Oh, it's not as bad. Stuff sits in there for.
Oh, I, don't get me wrong, guys. I can fill your tiddies up.
Yeah, early, early goose season.
It's one thing picking up with a flock of milk and then going up to a manhandle and shaking up.
And all the juice.
Well, and that's next Saturday.
Yeah, yeah. Early goose season.
Yeah, I throw all my fish carcasses, you know, but I freeze them.
That's good. That's way worse than.
Yes. Fish.
Well, that's my thing.
Well, I mean, change is always different.
It is.
And I mean, I'll, when we, when we go into these, I'll say it's going to be 90 days of chaos and then everybody will complain if we remove it. So you're going to get complaints, I.
Yeah.
No way we'll pull that. Well, I guess it's up to you as to what you do as well.
The nice way to do it is to write up a little teeny article about the trash. And we've tried to keep it local with us, but we can't anymore. Trucks are old. This is all. And just put a little ad in the newspaper.
And everybody will get a letter of what we call a welcome letter along with the calendar so that everybody knows how we treat holidays. And we would pick up on Wednesday. I don't know what day you pick up nurse days. Is that, is that an issue?
No.
Um, I'm going to use it pretty quickly, I would think, but, um, I don't think there are any days the rest of this year that are impacted by holidays. Because they're always after a holiday that it's an issue. And we go, there are only three holidays that we treat as real holidays. Fourth of July, Thanksgiving and Christmas. So like Labor Day is coming up, we're, nothing changes for us other than in Jamestown.
Well, I'd make the motion that we enter, we sign the contract and recycle that quota. All in favor?
Okay, and I'll, I'll place the order tomorrow and let you know right away what our lead time is. I'm hoping that we can set this up the week before, like a week before we actually pick up. So it would be, um, I don't know what the dates are. What's, what's the first Monday in September?
Neither.
We, what, what's the date?
First of September.
Oh, yeah, it's September 1st. Okay, so we would, we would start to deliver. We'd probably deliver all the dumpsters one day and all the carts the next day, probably like Thursday and Friday, the 28th and 29th, something like that. We would be in. So that's why we have to have some lead time on, and the carts would get delivered directly here.
Okay. That's the question is, everybody's going to have different sizes and.
Well, no, everybody will have an 86 gallon.
Oh, but you'll have to let us know.
You can have multiple.
I got it.
Yeah, you'll have to let us know if you have addresses where you want to deliver.
Yeah.
And then we'll need to get together on, on exactly where to deliver what size dumpster.
Can the residents just call you and tell you they'd like another one or?
Yeah. They can call our customer service number, which is 320-9218.
I don't know if that's even easy, but it probably isn't. What is it, 320?
9218.
Okay.
And then the same calendar that we will distribute it to everybody will also be on our website. If you think of any other questions, let me know. You've answered my question. Great.
Thank you. Do you want me to just sign this now or just wait or?
You can if you want. I got my coffee here.
Sorry to interrupt.
Well, I have one here too.
Can I borrow a pen?
Yeah.
Can I take a copy of that, please? I can put it on my phone.
Yeah, if you want to sign that too.
There's a copy of this on there.
We moved right into city maintenance, then build it again.
Um, we hope to a full lot. We, I hope that I keep, I keep that coming down and test it back a little bit. They all passed.
Thank you.
He's going to send out a mail of the city. The city will first.
What's that?
That the back holes that have been tested, there's seven of them that got tested. They all passed, so we'll get there. So we're going to, he's going to send a mail to you. You know, just, just first bills, something to school today. City wasn't going to charge mileage or sign it, but we had, but if you would. See, like, oh, it's only time right now. Look to do that. Let's save some money with this back door. Everybody's so worried about the way the copper stuff, the portion of the back doors hanging to the side and.
Oh, got you.
Need that on Main Street as well. Statement, page ready, so that's good. Got, sent out a burn area, well. Got a little issue there. I guess we can't have plywood in there at all. So I went in to file the pool out when I could. There's two holes in there that weren't supposed to be in there because they're treated, so I pulled them out. And just today I seen I got a burn there, so they, so I'm going to take it. And just today I seen I got a burn area, so they, so I'm gonna figure it out.
Are we gonna get a plan, will you?
I didn't, I didn't read through the letter, everything was a little question.
Do we have to be open?
Yeah, we're supposed to have the gates closed or locked up, and then right there, I just pulled it up, all the building off of it, I think we also have an option. I'm told, but I'm told the day they lock up.
Would you just come and inspect it off this, because of the burn areas, so it's a lot of work.
They said we could put a camera out there. Just show a camera or something. We have no deal, just by the heat, I told them, probably.
We should, we ought to be able to open out there, obviously, right?
Obviously, reasonable. But, all right, I'm ready. Let's see, I don't know. There's no, that was the other thing. I don't know if we can do it or not anymore, but next year, could we get some sort of plan to get that south of the park, that waterway done? But it's, so, I was getting so much done down there, I don't know, down there last week, completely, oh...
Are you talking to the left of that house?
Yeah.
To the north of that house, yeah.
Or don't?
Just south, just west of that house.
The big part?
Yeah, the road part and something to cover it, but...
You know what we probably should do there is get an estimate from S and S, if a guy could pour cement. It would probably be about a hundred and fifty feet. Pour cement so that you could just drive along with the skater, you know, that's six feet wide or seven, I don't know, skater, anyway.
For the road south of the park?
So wouldn't be a road. At least get an estimate so we know where they're at.
It's about that, you know, it looks like you know, like, I can, for the people. For more gravel and dirt, and washing their hands, but I told you. A lot of the people are asking, what's the city was gonna do for me, for the, for the, try to get estimates, kind of, from, from...
Do you think?
We won't be able to make sure.
Anything else? Auditorium.
Okay, I gave each one of you a copy of the letter, you see the city graph on top. It's a warning letter. Is there some way you can approve that maybe we do a warning letter to people who are not in compliance with the ordinances? And then after that, we serve them with a ticket?
Well, that's kind of what this letter is, though, is a warning, because you have to give them some...
Yes, but I want to be able to do this with all of them, that we, for now, make this our policy. Because we agreed, we were all gonna, y'all agreed to send this letter out like this to them, but can we make it our policy that, because there's a lot of other people that need a letter too?
I thought everything's gonna be different.
Well, of course, I'll take off his name and his parcel number and put the next person.
Code violations and...
All right, the code violations will change, and then I staple to this one, I put, um, copies of the code violations. But let's say we have another resident that has stuff wrong, you know, should we give them a warning before we send them citations?
Oh, we have to, yeah. We can't just cite them, it's gotta be two weeks.
I thought that's what we've been doing, then.
No.
That's even more than one week.
This is the first warning for this I've given out.
Yeah.
This is a citation.
No, for ordinance, I mean, for them to not be in compliance with the ordinance.
Right.
Okay, we've never sent one of these out before. We just send over a, a ticket for it.
Well, they have so many days to be compliant with it.
Right, right. Right, so this might, should we do this first and so that way they don't round their ticket and we wait for...
I thought that's what we were doing. This is what we were doing.
So if we send...
I may just made this one up.
Maybe Kyle would know, if we would send this letter, is that the same as giving them the two weeks and then we can go cite them right after?
Right, right, well, this one later we did for seven days, you have seven days to comply or we send, we get you a ticket.
Depends on what ordinance you're trying to enforce.
I'm sure they're different, huh?
Well, I mean, you know, are you looking at vehicles that aren't moving, or you're looking at this or that? Because everything is, is different.
You wanna show him that?
He's got one, he delivered it for me.
Okay.
Did you deliver it already?
On my driver?
Yeah.
Oh, I, uh, definitely.
Right.
Um, I would say if, if you want to send out a letter.
I'm okay with the letter, we have a mailing it. But I just don't want it to go on, so now it's, like, Kyle's just gonna deliver it to him, so now he's got seven days, and then you got two weeks till he fixes it again, so we're down two months.
So we're, we're better off if we just, a week and a half ago, when, when they got the letter, we just send them over a, a ticket.
Well, I mean, I don't know, am I saying it right, like, he just can't go over and cite them, he's gotta give them so much time to remove, whatever the city ordinance says, correct, that's what you're saying?
No, I mean, technically, if there is an issue, we can go cite right away, we don't have to give warnings. It, it would behoove the city council to be polite with the citizens in their own sense.
Sure.
And send a letter, or a phone call, you know, if it's one person, you know, I would just call them, be like, hey, you're messing up, you know, fix these things. Okay, or if it's a blanket statement for everyone, then I would send the letters, but a phone call, that is more personable, if it is just one person. As long as that person can be dealt with, you know, all the, a few of our citizens would be difficult because they try and tell you to shove it. Um, but, you know, as long as they're fairly respectable, I, I think that's what all, all it is. But if you're gonna send it out to everyone in Gackel, then now, except a lot of people, you're able to...
Well, I, we've talked, I mean, we don't need to send a letter to everybody.
No, this is just if you are not in compliance with the ordinance.
Right, so if it's like five people, I want them to take a call, but...
And like, I agree with you, it depends what it is, obviously, too, I mean, if it's something that needs to be fixed right away.
If, if it's like a camper, you know, hey, you know, move this before it snows, you know, or whatever, you know, whatever you guys are trying to achieve.
Okay.
Okay. All right, then the other one was, um, our city deposits and our reconnection fee. City deposit, if you're gonna start having water and sewer, garbage all that, it's eighty dollars. Now, that was made a long time ago, so if somebody runs out on their bill, you don't have enough there to even cover, you know, you have enough to cover one bill, but not more than that, usually they have more than that. If you call anywhere else, our deposit's always more than eighty dollars. So maybe we should up that a little bit.
Because I think we should go up to a hundred and fifty. Because if they, right now, they got an eighty dollar deposit, well, that covers one month's bill, basically. Where, uh, if we went to a hundred and fifty at least, then they would get their second, or they get their notice, they're gonna be disconnected.
Now, then, the other one would be the reconnection fee. Um, once it were cut off, do you want to keep the reconfection, reconnection fee at eighty dollars, or do you want... They, most of the time, the ones that are getting cut off are habitual, all the time. Which you're sending the letters to. So I don't know if you want to go up on that, or... Well, what the, and what would happen is their first, like, they have their eighty dollar deposit there, because we have one now, like, um, it's gonna jump up to a hundred and fifty. Additional deposit because they, they have such a big bill there, the water's been cut off for quite a while.
How long did you guys go turn off the water, like, people, what's...
I sent out more letters than they cut off, people, we should try to...
That's my question. So the threat, here's what takes care of it, they're just gonna want this year. So you're at one this year.
Of course, the reconnection fee, they gotta make the deposit before you reconnect it.
I agree on the deposit part, but it's, but it's the reconnection, I, I don't think so.
I think the reconnection fee is the state is saying, but they're developing, developing that deposit easy, because it should be at least two months, every bill will be at least two months.
I agree.
They gotta come up with two months, the reconnection fee.
Like, people that have been paying that, to pay the eighty dollars, or they could be grandfathered, or is this still...
It just started till now, anybody new now.
Well, I see what you're, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying, that, that's...
Unless it's a habitual payer.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not going around asking the resident for an extra seventy dollars to put down at the page. We don't have enough time for three years.
Yeah, I, I just move...
A lot of the residents got their eighty dollars back and made them put theirs.
That's one of those Kyle things, I tell them, fuck off, I paid my bill every month and you come at me for another seventy.
Right, so leave that at eighty. And that at one fifty, and just do the one fifty, start new, anybody new. Right?
Yeah, if you guys want to make some more, so...
We need a motion for that?
Um, I would say so, probably.
A motion to up the deposit to a hundred and fifty dollars to keep the reconnection at eighty. More, a second?
A second.
Very, all in favor?
Aye.
And, the only other thing that went down there is the church lots, I talked to both of those people. The guy south of Storbecks is looking for somebody to mow. The owner was saying maybe take, uh, what, what, put it down there?
The sickle guard.
The sickle guard, and I'll talk to the owner and see if, he, he should tell me a price and I'll tell him that, to, this time it should be sickle mow. Even if he finds somebody to mow the grasses.
Because what prompted it, I had two, actually, three complaints, and it's true, I just go by them last night. There's pig weed, you know, that's up there, there's no way a river lawnmower's designed it, and that stuff done. So I think it's gonna take the sickle mower. And, uh...
Anybody knows anybody's looking for an extra side job mowing, that he's looking?
And I also feel that we shouldn't be too lenient on them. Because if these guys want to buy that property, even though they have good intentions or are saying they want to put a cottage on or cabin on there. They still gotta realize the grass grows and weeds. So they got, and if they can't find a contractor, they still gotta keep it mowing, really.
So I talked to both of them already, so I can have them stop there, yes. Which, which, which property is that?
The old Catholic church. And that Ryan Storbeck.
Oh, oh, okay.
Two blocks west of our house.
Wayne Nelson cut the church once. Jeff tried to go, Jeff Shai tried to cut it, it was law, and he said, hit rocks, all kinds of stuff, so Wayne couldn't do it. Wayne's got that small tractor.
I wonder if Wayne would want to do that?
Probably.
But probably need the sickle mower first, right?
He could be fucking, he could cut with his tractor.
Could he? All right, now maybe I'll go over and talk to him, because the owner is looking for somebody.
He charges the owner a leg, but, um, really. I guess I would too, if you had to go through that shit, I mean, that's, that's gonna take... It would take me over an hour to do it that big, vaguely, just with, you know, regular grass. Anything else?
No.
Graham, you got anything? Larry? Uh-oh, Larry's a charge of garbage, so you get to handle all the phone calls, there you go.
Yes, and half ones now.
Have you all for the residents that are only picking up six months out of the year, should you leave it up to the resident to call them? And let him know that they don't need to pick up here at this address? Or should it's them calling here and us conveying messages to them?
I thought he said that was just for the commercial.
Not the... No, he said resident too.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
That's why I asked him, if the residents could call and say, I'd like a smaller container, or I want two containers, or I'm leaving, I'm leaving to go back to Arizona in, uh, September, and I'm gonna be back till May, you know?
I just foresee a problem if you don't do it that way, because they're gonna say they left a message here, or called so and so.
I think that we ought to make it our own personal responsibility, let's not put it on.
Yeah, I guess that's a, well, we got that number, they're just gonna have to figure it out, I guess. And they'll do it once they get billed for that month they weren't here.
I mean, their address is right on the notch over there.
But we say we're billing for all months or every month, right?
Oh, we're gonna...
The residential.
I, no, I...
Huh?
Yeah.
I think we should.
What?
And if they don't have a tote, if they're not putting a tote out, then fine, but, because it's gonna be a mess if they don't, if the residential don't get billed twelve months out of the year.
It was before, because that's the way it was, and that's why when I came on board, every month it was somebody different, you had to switch six months on, six months off. And then I went through it, I did everybody six months on, everybody six months off, but then you have to go on your computer and switch it out, you know, each time, it's a pain.
I think this should be a pain.
Especially when we have sixty-two of them.
And I'm just saying, I don't plan on having a tow to our place. Because we got the dumpster up the shop, it's just as easy for me to throw the garbage in back of the pickup, but I'll gladly pay the tow fee. You know, I'm not trying to avoid it, but I just don't want them at home, so I'll take it up there and throw it in the dumpster.
Well, that's a great question that we need to resolve, I guess.
Because we gotta figure out how many, you know, what does everybody need, want, and, commercial and residential, whether one or two, or three, or whatever. So are we gonna send out, you know, a, a letter with an extra bill thing?
Have a meeting about it?
Or... You gotta figure out what they want, or are you gonna just throw this all on the people, contact them and tell them what you want?
That'd be horrible, people, it shouldn't come from sheet paper all the way down.
Or if they need some water, they're all, it's like, you say, oh, move it.
We've already set our water bill out, we don't send another one out till, like, twenty in a month.
In my experience in big cities that I grew up in, I never contacted the city for hardly anything. If I had water, I contacted the water department, if I had a garbage issue, I contacted the garbage department.
The difference is here, we...
Never call the city and make it their problem, your problem, their...
The problem, the problem here is we send the bill, we bill them, everything will unbilled from the city, we pay everybody for stuff.
Those are, the majority of our bills is assessments and, haven't had my right, you only pay like sixteen dollars a month for the actual garbage part of it, is that actually...
Fourteen.
Right, and the rest of the seventy-seven dollars are assessments.
No, it's sewer, that's what it's seventy-five, water, and...
A sewer assessment and water, and infrastructure and steel, and, uh, so...
The only thing would be, you know, that would be up to, say, the seasonal, the hunters or...
That's gonna be tough.
But, I mean, it'd be very responsible, you're not gonna have one, but as far as you still bill twelve months out of the year.
Yeah.
If he pulls up and dumps an empty container, it'll be a...
Because we have sixty-five of them.
It wouldn't.
You're talking four dollars a month for an English, add a, add a tote, dumb dollar. So worth eighteen dollars, twenty-five cents. So it's kind of four dollars.
The ones that I've been concerned about is the commercials.
Right.
Mostly the commercials, if they...
But I'll call him, and he'll, he'll, he'll manage.
Do you know, maybe we should just build the residential as is, uh, we've been doing it in the past. And let it grow for a while. You know, let it pick up for a while, let's get it started.
Just leave it alone?
Yeah.
I think we can figure the sellers. If we wanna re, readdress it later on, and see.
Get his consensus of everybody's.
Works in a little bit.
I agree.
Yep.
That way she doesn't need to change anything, is the point? Well, I'll have to change the charging for it, but that's okay. Are you saying not to do that? Well, you sweep, or are we gonna pay the, the extra money?
And we could, four dollars a month? No, you just, you start charging twenty, fifty, or.
Right, I can do that by one, if I can change them all, better. But when you're starting to look at sixty-five separate, and all over the computer, to turn it on, on and off.
Uh, that's what we.
And then the commercials will have to determine what size dumpsters. And the goals are gonna vary. And they probably should just be contacting the person that cares about it. If they want two four yarders.
Yep.
That's, that's what we're gonna.
I mean, it's not that impossible, there's like fifteen, eighteen, eighteen.
So maybe Delly should get a sheet of paper and go on and pass all the businesses, which are very important.
I'm thinking if you're probably gonna drop down, but we have understanding from you guys, like, they're not always full.
I don't, we don't.
It's just that we operate it cheap, so. But they gotta switch them all a few times, that's just where it's gonna go.
I would say the dorm room, we're all gonna stay, except for school.
I'll reply, you're not, you're not.
We're gonna go down.
But you're too.
You got one that's empty most.
That's what he's saying.
But you're gonna have to relate to them, don't, if they, they have to take early.
Oh, yeah.
We didn't, we, large ones was thirty-two, twenty-nine, and it didn't matter.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And that's on us.
You know, I'm like, one kill up, and considering if he's still locked out. I'm sure if he was once, you know, it was.
Yeah, you're gonna have to.
Someone's gonna figure it out, or, or, or. Yeah, right, we all have to, so we're gonna just sort of. Yeah, I guess, I just have to go down that list that you gave me. Figure out what they're gonna do, cause he's gonna have to get them out here before.
Yeah. So the existing dumpsters, um, they're gonna go away.
We'll probably have to put them on sale somewhere. Some of them, right? I assume they is, we'll probably quite fill them.
Alright, well, I think we've discussed, uh, old business, the J D K thing's been up a few times. So we need to go ahead and further, um, we've discussed new business with just the church and lots out of Storbecks rolling, and then we're off the tracks, so. Everyone have a chance to look at the bills, from last one, any questions on this? If not, we'll take a motion to approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, date and time, September first, at seven P M, does that work, Charlie?
Absolutely.
How many say?
Are we gonna continue to seven o'clock, I think we're doing that. Do my best, and I'm gonna.
If you wanna change it, we sure can.
Cause I would get off at seven, I mean, it'd be seven thirty-eight, probably be for the month of September.
Why don't we just do it on Tuesday?
Let's say September eighth, at eight o'clock then?
September eighth?
Keep it just following Monday. That'll give Ralph some more time, just in case, to figure out, if he doesn't get all the dumpsters here before then.
Perfect.
So September eighth, at E P M will be the next meeting?
Okay.
And then you just let us go from there?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be fine.
Harvest is coming up, so that's gonna help with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Flip a little tight.
Okay, uh, anything else, if not, we'll take a motion.
I have a question, is there a city ordinance about houses unfit to living? Because, the other day, I heard some people out in the backyard of my house, next door. And, went out the front door on my deck, there's people carrying stuff out of the house, taking it around the back of the house, throwing it in the back of the pickup, they had pickup bags up. And I couldn't see over the bushes, the who was in the pickup, or who it was or anything, I don't know if somebody was robbing the place. They parked their pickup truck right against the back of the house, and they're taking stuff out the front door, running it around the back. So I called Andrew, and he went out there. It's, uh, what's his best name, Joseph Lund? Who was staying up with Ken Brownson. Um, and he told Andrew that he was told by the, by the owner's boyfriend that he flew in there, in that house on. I got a feeling they're, cause they were back again, they were carrying stuff out of there since that day. I got a feeling they're planning on moving in that house for winter. There's no furnace in the house. There's no electricity in the house, there's no water in the house.
No running water, the sewer's the big one.
Sewers all blocked up, they used the, just, the toilets in the house, uh, without running water, and they're just, I mean, Kyle had pictures of it, it's nasty, you know? And, there's still bags of human feces stacked against all this garage. I can still smell it in the garage where it goes. Uh, and I got a feeling that they're planning on moving in there for winter.
We have, at one point, Nardell was still on. He was appointed when we were messing with the house down here, correct?
The building inspector.
And I, did we, well, you bill as the one of that, it's, uh, some, was it some inspector, what was the title of that, do you remember? But we had to appoint someone.
Had to appoint a building inspector.
Is that what it was?
Uh-huh. And then there's, in the.
Is it a building inspector, health inspector?
Nope, building inspector. And, uh, as far as the water and sewer, that's pretty defined, that if the city is providing water and sewer, like in this case, it's on the street, you know, it's there. They cannot live in it. That's pretty simple, I think it's under health. As far as the building inspector, I think that's under health too.
That's more than we can damage, right? Is that more of a, I don't know about.
And there's quite here.
Water thing's the big one that we could, for our.
Well, no, also, there's no, no source of heat in the house.
Right.
A guy that, that they bought it from, who I used to take care of house, where Jason, he took the furnace out, was gonna put brand furnace in. And then he found this property up in Dell's Lake, he wanted to buy that. And sold most of the houses, so he never put the furnace back in there.
Okay.
Maybe they give room for. She was burning, the woman that was there last year, during that ice storm, was burning a propane grill inside the house.
Okay.
To, to heat it.
Burn the house down?
Yes, no.